Okay, we should be good to go.
Thank you, I'm gonna call this meeting. This is the regular session of the mayor and council. The city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and the state of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, December 1st at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino. Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
Mayor-elect Ken Budge. Councilmember-elect Frank Davis.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, city manager Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Joelle Landers Personnel Director, Jesus Haro Public Works Director, George Castillo Fire Chief, Joe Estes City Attorney. And we have many other staff members here as well.
For a moment it's silent, I'd like us to take a minute and reflect on our new mayor and council pulling everybody together and providing leadership to our city. And all of us always remember that over 3,000 people voted in Bisbee this last election and that you all represent all of them. And if you take just a minute with me, please. Thank you. My announcement is, you know, the only real announcement that I had is, and I know it comes up in a while, but I wanted to personally thank our employees that are being recognized today for their service and particularly our fire chief. Chief Castillo, 30 years with the city of Bisbee. And we really, I personally greatly appreciate your dedication and your assistance that you provided to us, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I have a proclamation. And the proclamation is Reefs Across America. Whereas the Reefs Across America Organization was formed in 2007 as an extension of the Arlington Reef Project of 1992, where reefs were laid on the graves of fallen soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas the mission of the Reefs Across America Organization is to remember the fallen, to honor those that served their families, and to teach the next generation about the value of freedom. Whereas each year, Reefs Across America chooses a new theme to help support their focus, their message, and their outreach in their communities.
Okay, hold on.
And this year, the theme for 2020 is Be An American Worth Fighting For. And whereas each year, this mission is carried out by the coordination of reefs laying ceremonies on a specified Saturday in December at Arlington National Cemetery, as well as veteran cemeteries and other locations in all 50 states and beyond. And whereas Saturday, December 19th, 2020, has been designated by Reefs Across America Organization as a date for these ceremonies to occur. Now therefore, bid resolve that I, David M. Smith, Mayor of the city of Bisbee, do hereby encourage all citizens to participate with Reefs Across America and be their witness.
I should have taken that right here, you guys.
In these ceremonies throughout the great nation, in witness thereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Bisbee to be affixed this first day of December 2020. David M. Smith, Mayor. And I believe that Ms. Hanson had something she wished to say.
Yes. Grace Wiggins is the one that is heads up this particular event. And I just wanted to let everybody know that the Reefs Across America will be held on December 19th at 10 o'clock. And at Arlington, it'll be at 12, so we'll be doing it at the same time. And it will be also the COVID protocols will be in place at all times. So I hope that we can get some people out there. If we can't have a public gathering, then we will simply have the people laying the wreaths and also honoring you to all the services.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Call to the public. Ms. Joelle, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. This is from Vicky Barth. Dear councilmembers, thank you to those of you who have supported continued funding of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. You are greatly appreciated. In June 2020, the city passed a new budget which included $85,000 for our shelter. Why is the budget shortfall created by an anticipated and hoped-for increase in sales tax being made up through defunding the shelter services? Having worked in public sector government administration, I have never created budgets based upon money maybes. The newest rushed-out version of the RFP demonstrates yet again that the outgoing mayor and our current city manager wish to eliminate viable animal services in our city. There are no provisions in the RFP for owner-surrendered pets or strays brought into the shelter by members of the community, your constituents. We all know that three-to-five-day holds are insufficient to find homes for many of the animals. How is any responsible group to respond to this nonsensical RFP? And how does this latest RFP reflect collaboration with the community? The city manager has encouraged collaboration with outside animal rescue groups as if that was some novel idea. Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter does and always has worked with these groups. They are also underfunded. I again urge you to continue dialogue with our community members and to get our no-kill shelter back on solid footing. Thank you for your time, Vicky Barth.
Thank you, Mayor.
And this is from Janet Gray. The new RFP issued by the city manager closely resembles the last RFP in spite of council and community input as to what residents of Bisbee want to see in their animal shelter. Once again, there is no provision for owner-surrender animals or strays brought to the shelter. The police.
Right now, I'm muted for them, right? Or am I muted? I can't hear.
Sorry. The police and for many months nonexistent animal control officer play a very small role in the number of animals taken in by the shelter. Why the city manager keeps returning to them as the main source for animals in the shelter is beyond me. If this shelter doesn't allow owner surrenders, resident turn-ins of strays, the city of Bisbee will be inundated with unwanted animals roaming the streets. Is that what we want for Bisbee? Allowing only the minimum three-to-five-day hold per animal as required by state law makes it almost impossible to find existing or new owners. The idea that after three-to-five days, all animals will be returned to their homes or shipped out to rescue groups is preposterous. This push to send all unwanted animals to rescue groups will never work. These groups are currently underfunded and overpopulated. They don't have room for Bisbee's animals. Finally, in June, the city passed a budget line item of $85,000 to fund the shelter contract. I realize that times have changed. The city tax increase was voted down. But does the deficit have to come out of the shelter budget? If there have to be cuts across the board, everyone will understand. What your constituents won't understand is getting the shelter budget. The city manager may not believe in, believe animal care in Bisbee is important, but the residents do want their tax dollars spent to support the animal shelter. Please, once again, review the new RFP. Contrary to what the current mayor keeps stating, you have not only the right, but the duty to oversee the work of the city manager. Not micromanage, but oversee. No one expects council members to rewrite the RFP, but we do expect an RFP that reflects the will of the citizens of Bisbee. Thank you, Janet Gray.
Thank you.
This is from Cato Daily. Thank you to Mayor David Smith and outgoing council members for their service to the Bisbee community. We know, we know it has been challenging as well as rewarding. We appreciate your dedication, Cato Daily and Jerry Dowd. Again, Cato Daily, Mayor and Council. As of November 30th, 2020, there were at least 51 actively infected people in Bisbee with the COVID virus, according to the Cochise County Health Department. Many of you may know a friend who is sick. We know that the virus can spread in enclosed spaces with poor ventilation, even with masks on. One of these places where all of us in old Bisbee have to go is the post office. We suggest a couple of things to make us safer. When in the post office, keep conversations at a minimum, but better yet, take our conversations outside. Because most masks are effective, but not 100% effective. Reducing conversation in the lobby will reduce the amount of aerosols we expel and breathe while also helping keep the air cleaner for the postal workers who breathe that air all day. The doors should be kept open to help with airflow. And it would be helpful if we could get our mail when the lobby isn't full of people, which means keeping the lobby open after after hours until, say, 8:00 PM. The police could be asked to lock it up for the night. We need to protect our community, particularly right now. And we hope these simple suggested actions will help us get over this pandemic soon. Thank you, Cato Daily and Jerry Dowd.
Thank you.
And from Fred Miller. Good evening. I had hoped that a new RFP for animal care services would have been incorporated, at least some of community input. Not so. Many, many suggestions were ignored. According to the current RFP, the city wants info on costs of animals brought in by the ACO. In fact, this year-to-date, ACO brought in only about 10% of the 48 animals received, excuse me, 480 animals received at the shelter. In 2019, 514 animals were brought into the shelter. Only 16% by the ACO. Clearly, residents bring in the vast majority of animals for care. The fact that the RFP ignores this invalidates this process. Many of us are puzzled by this concerted effort to change animal control services. Many people in the community like the way animal control services have been handled the past four years by the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. This is the kind of service, services we are willing to pay for with taxes, a direct benefit to the community. The hypothetical shelter that is represented in the RFP is not consistent with what the community wants. I implore the council to direct the city manager to withdraw the current RFP. We need services that conform to what we have had in the past few years. Fred Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Moving on to general business, accounts payable. Do we have a motion on accounts payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $77,697.54.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Klein, it doesn't look like you're in the shower. Just sounds like it, huh? All right. We have a motion and we do have a second. Questions, council? No questions? Going once. All right, no questions. All those in favor of paying accounts payable signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda. We have one item. It's a little, a slightly odd item, but Mr. Budge has given me the opportunity to put this approval of the appointment of Bill Higgins, my friend Bill, to the Bisbee Arts Commission effective December 3rd, 2020. So don't be messing with anything tomorrow, Bill. For another day. And thank you, Mayor Budge, for allowing me to make this appointment. I appreciate that. So I would like to make a motion to approve item A, approval of the appointment of William Higgins to the Bisbee Arts Commission effective December 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Now, discussion. Mr. Higgins, did you have something?
Do I recuse myself?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Technically, you don't have to. It's not a paid position.
I'll recuse myself.
Technically, Bill, you don't have to.
Well, then I'll vote for myself.
Oh, all right. Thanks, Joe. Thank you for the clarification, sir. All right, Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Pollak. Somebody's phone is vibrating. Councilmember Pollak.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Hi.
Councilmember Higgins.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanson.
Hi.
Councilmember Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
We have no old business. We're gonna go to new business, changing outgoing and incoming council. And the first item is, Bill, you're on. As outgoing council, do you have any final words?
No, no, I don't. I'm just grateful for the opportunity to serve the city of Bisbee. And it's something everybody should do once in their life. And I'm very happy that I did it and I'm, I'm pretty happy that it's over too. So I just want to thank all the support that I got from all the citizens of Bisbee.
Thanks, Bill. And save a seat for me next to your, on your bench there.
Okay, I will.
All right. I have just a couple of things to say. It's, I do want to indicate that it's been a real honor and a privilege to have been your mayor for the last four years. And I've been able to work with so many great people and I really appreciate all of you. You know, I've worked with four city managers and Teresa Coleman, I want to particularly thank you for your professionalism in following the law rather than popular opinion. It's been really tough for you. And we understand that the law, the charter, and the city code are there for a purpose. And thank you for doing that. I want to thank Jim Ledbetter, although he's not here. He jumped in in our time of need and he guided us past many different roadblocks that were there. And you all are very, very fortunate to have Joe Estes and his firm behind you. It's a great firm and Mr. Estes has got some great experience as both a prior council person and as a a city attorney in a smaller jurisdiction. So that's terrific. I want to thank the council for your hard work. It has been many difficult decisions. And, you know, the mayor and council provides direction. And it's really our employees that carry the heavy lifting. They do the heavy lifting. They carry the load for us. They carry forth your direction. And I'm, they make your direction, they, to, they break, take it to fruition. And I have one ask, and that's please take care of our employees. And Mr. Budge, I love Bisbee and I look forward to it prospering. And Mayor Budge, the dais is yours, the gavel is yours, Godspeed, and I wish you absolutely the best of luck in heading our city. And with that, adios. It's been real and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Smith. First, I just want to give thanks to you as the outgoing mayor and also councilmember Higgins for all your years of service to our city. It's not easy. We all know that. And I truly am honored to take this position from you. So with that, I would like to make a slight opening remarks under a personal privilege. And then I would like to open a personal privilege for our other three newly, some re-elected and also newly elected. But I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to be elected as the city of Bisbee mayor. I'm grateful for all the support that has brought me here, my friends and family, many of whom are watching right now, and all the people that encouraged and supported me in my campaign. Bisbee residents must continue to fight this relentless transmission of this COVID-19 virus. I am asking residents to continue adhering to all the guidelines so conditions don't deteriorate. We all can work together for a bright and shared future in a city that we all have pride in and that we call home. A community where regardless of what is happening across the nation and the world, we take care of each other. A lot of decisions are made by this body that affect our town and the residents. My commitment is to remember I serve you and will always try to do the most good for the most people. Because many issues are complex and sometimes emotionally charged, I commit to being open to you with all information. We will move through any uncertainty slowly, studying the issues and disseminating that information to make the best decision we can as your elected officials. I also will be willing to change course if mistakes are made and things don't go as planned. Working toward this vision is going to take a lot of listening, learning, and patience, both on my part and everyone who shows up to be part of the conversation. It is not just the seven of us, but everybody who will share their expertise and feelings with us. I know that we as a council show up because we love this city and I hope you will do the same. Despite the challenges before us, there's also plenty of opportunity. I'm excited to serve the city and I'm looking forward to these next two years. I always believe our town wins by bringing people along with the city, not shutting them out. It's time to stop taking fights. Instead, let's bring the city together rather than pushing it apart. And I'd like to turn over the time to councilmember Hanson. If you have something to say, I would be glad to hear.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to those who have supported me in the past and hopefully will support me in the future. I will continue to strive to do what is best for Bisbee and all of Bisbee and to follow the applicable rules. And I, I look forward to working with the employees. You're a great bunch and you have really shown me a lot of respect and you've also, I hope I have respected you in return. And I look forward to working with you and solving the problems that we face.
Thank you. Lou, Mr. Pollak, councilmember Pollak, would you like to say something? I'm, I'll give the last one to the lastly newly elected.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor-elect. First, I'd like to thank I'd like to thank Mayor Smith for being a mentor and a friend to me during the last year that I've been on the council as an appointee. And I will always appreciate the things that he did to teach me to be a better councilperson. Mayor Budge, I look forward to working with you to solve the myriad of problems that Bisbee faces with the COVID crisis and the fiscal damage that it has done to our city. And I'm sure that in a spirit of cooperation and patience, we can overcome these problems. And I look forward to that. To the citizens of Bisbee, I want you to know that I've always been a compromiser and a consensus builder in my previous life and my previous career, and I will continue to do that on the city council. I think that compromise and consensus is the only way to solve the problems that we face as a community. So thank you very much for the opportunity to say a few words.
You're welcome. And I'm right with you on all your wanting to work together. I think that's the important part. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the voters of Ward 1 for allowing me to represent them on the Bisbee City Council. I would also like to thank Mayor Smith and Council Bill Higgins for all their hard work these past four years. Though they are leaving the council, I'm sure they will be available for helping with good works for Bisbee. I am looking forward to working with my fellow councilmembers on all faces, faces of, all that faces Bisbee and do so in a thoughtful and respectful way. COVID-19 has dealt us a tough hand, but as vaccines are appearing on the horizon, it looks like we may be seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. The COVID has forced us to do many things differently. Doing things differently is not always a bad thing. It can open one's mind to new possibilities. And as we enter into a new decade, leaving COVID behind and with a new mayor and council, I will think that we, I think we will find that the possibilities for a prosperous Bisbee are only limited by our imagination. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Not much else to say, but we'll pull together and we'll, we'll get through this. I hope you realize this is a little new for me. I'm sure there'll be some mistakes and and I'm gonna be upfront right now and I am partially dyslexic. I've dealt with it my whole life. So if I muff up a name, please help me because I never look for not wanting a little bit of help when I need it. So thank you very much. So. Well, with that, I guess we'll move on to agenda item number four. This is an appointment of councilmember Anna Klein as my mayor pro tem. I don't think that requires a vote, does it, clerk? Does it?
No, I'm sorry about that. No, it does not.
So with that, Mayor Pro Tem Klein, welcome aboard. I remember all the years I spent working with you before and I'm, I'm chosen you because I know of your experience and trust. So thank you. Item agenda number five. This is our employee longevity recognition. It's a presentation. And Ms. Landers, I would appreciate you taking this. I just want to say really quickly, longevity is hardly a backbone of a small city. All those, all that experience really plays into what makes our employees so valuable to us. So I'm really happy about this. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Budge. Mayor and council, this evening, we have three employees who will be reaching longevity milestones in the month of December. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize them this evening. With 10 years of longevity, Matt Gurney, our Public Works Operations Manager, will reach that. reach that milestone on December 6th of 2020. He began in 2010. And now I'd like to allow Mr. Harrow to say a few words.
I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Landers. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I feel privileged to be able to say a few words about Mr. Matthew. Matthew came to us from the city of Sierra Vista in December 2010. He joined us in the sanitation department. He was started with the city of Bisbee, driving one of the larger garbage trucks. He then moved over into the into the old Bisbee area, which is a little bit more challenging because you've got to be able to turn to drive very well. He then moved over into the streets department where he spent 60 years there. He was a part of a few pretty large projects. First, he was part of the beginning of the in-house paving program prior to, I believe, was only contractors. So he, we were able to start doing in-house paving with him. In, he was also part of the Santa Cruz Wash Crossing Rehabilitation Construction Project. And Mr. Gurney was the person that staff member that installed the lights on Main Streets and OK Streets. So those beautiful lights that go across streets, those were the the doing of Mr. Gurney. In January or June, I'm sorry, June of 2019, I was able to find that he was going to be a valuable member of the Public Works Department. And he was appointed as the Public Works Operations Manager. In addition to that, in April of 2020 this year, he took on the role of the Airport Facilities Manager. Again, I feel very privileged to say a few words and and honored to be able to congratulate Matthew and 10 years with the city of Bisbee.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. And thank you, Matt. And this will be on your desk soon.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Okay, and then we have Clarence Hickman, he's current acting captain at the Bisbee Fire Department. And on December 23rd, he will reach 10 years of longevity. And I would like to ask Chief Castillo to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Clarence Hickman has come a long way since he started his career 10 years ago as a firefighter. He's worked his way up the chain to become a lieutenant two years ago. He is now in the acting captain role. He gets along with all his employees. While in the acting captain role, he has brought a lot of morale back to a shift he is supervising. Mr. Hickman is full of energy and he's into physical fitness and now he has a shift doing physical fitness with him every morning and it helps him keep in shape and get fire ready. Mr. Hickman's in charge of our department's vehicles and the maintenance for our vehicles. He makes sure that all our equipment is scheduled for service when needed and make sure that those vehicles are safe to be on the road for firefighters and the patients that we serve or the community. He's a devoted family man. Him and his wife Alma have recently fostered some small children that needed help into their family. So with the duties he's doing now and working a lot, he still has time for that. It's been a pleasure and an honor to have Acting Captain Clarence Hickman working for the city of Bisbee. And I know he's going to continue to strive more and more in the department and make a career here. So thank you, Clarence, for your service. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks to the city of Bisbee. Thank you.
Okay. And celebrating 30 years of longevity with the city of Bisbee on December 4th is Fire Chief George Castillo. And I have something to read for chief. This is from Jason, Allison, Samantha, Kathy and Damaris at the library. Chief George Castillo's commitment to the Fire Department and to the city of Bisbee goes beyond his department and is exemplified in his efforts to support community-based programs as his work with the Copper Queen Library highlights. Every request for the Fire Department to do programs and barbecues for the summer reading program each year has been met with willingness and excitement. We have all enjoyed smokehouse trainings, equipment trainings, and wonderful visits with the kids each summer. As well, the library was able to create the Food for Fines program in order to help provide more food and book presents for the department's food baskets, which we are glad to announce we will be participating in again this coming Christmas. These programs include all of the wonderful firefighters in the department. But without the strength and commitment of the chief's leadership to support community-based programs, this would not be as effective. Please know that your decisions have always created an exponential effect of support throughout our city and we appreciate it. Thank you, Jason, Allison, Samantha, Kathy and Damaris. And thank you, Chief.
Thank you all. That was very sweet. Thank you.
Oh, she says kind of special. So it has the city of Bisbee logo on the front and on the reverse has the Bisbee Fire crest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As old as that is, it should be barn woods, shouldn't it?
Thank you.
George, 30 years, you passed me up and that, you know, puts me in danger. But I do remember I sat on your promotional board when you first got promoted. I was one of the people on that board. So I remember how far back that went. So again, it's a life of dedication and we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been, I've enjoyed working here for the city of Bisbee for 30 years. You know, it's been an honor and a pleasure. You know, I've seen a lot in these 30 years working here for this department, some things I don't want to see ever again. It's very difficult. This job is very difficult, very stressful. It takes you away from your family. And like I said, it's it's you're a special breed for this job. And you know, I still got a little bit of fuel left in my tank to serve. So I plan on serving, you know, for a few more years. I do have some unfinished business that I need to take care of and that's trying to get my guys, you know, some more equipment and making things safer for them and better for them than I had it when I first started. So again, I appreciate this from all you. It's a pleasure and I really enjoy working for the city of Bisbee and being a fire chief. I love, I love my department and I love the men and women that serve for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any personal privileges? We move on? Okay, great. Thank you all. So we'll move on to agenda item number six. This will be a presentation from the Copper Queen Library on their response to the COVID and how it's going on. So be glad to hear from whomever's doing it. Which one of you two?
You got a little bit of feedback going on.
Jason, can you start? Ashley, if you can let me share.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Kind of broken up, I think.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. It's a little bit broken up.
Okay.
Can you let me share the screen?
You should be able to. You should have the controls down at the bottom to share your screen.
It says disabled attendee screen sharing.
Sure, I know.
Excellent. All right, welcome. Jason, do you want to begin?
If you guys can hear me, okay, I can certainly begin. So thank you for having us, Mayor and Council, and please stop me if I'm if if you can't understand what I'm saying or I'm breaking up. Thank you for the opportunity to just showcase what we've been working on at the library during the COVID-19 pandemic. And we're really happy to share a lot of information with you. So let's get started. Of course, one of our favorite things is to be recognized by the Bisbee community. And again, this year, we placed in the Best of Bisbee 2020 Awards. First place for Best Attraction Museum, second place for Best Customer Service. Really thought of that one. Our team at the library goes above and beyond every day for our patrons and it's it's really great to be recognized. And also the Friends of the Copper Queen Library placed first place for Best Event, and that's for the Chocolate Tasting in February. And third place for Best Nonprofit and Charity. Okay, so right now, our library building is closed to the public for safety. We're trying to keep everyone safe, our staff and our patrons. And our balcony has actually become our outdoor library. It's command center for a lot of different things. We are doing curbside pickup. That's where people that can do the stairs can come up and grab their own materials. We also run out materials to people's cars out back. Same thing at the San Jose Annex on Fridays. The Science Lab has a presence there with their pickup table. We are offering visitor information. And our balcony has also been newly wired for electrical outlets by Step Up Bisbee Naco, which is going to allow people to use their own devices. They can bring their computers. We got a Wi-Fi extender to boost our signal out so people can use it out in the balcony. And we've got a grant for Chromebooks so people that don't have their own devices can use one of our Chromebooks to to use the internet and take care of some business. And we are following safety protocols. All materials that come back in the library that are returned, we are quarantining for 72 hours. That's a standard protocol that libraries are using right now. And all materials are clean and disinfected after the 72 hours. Okay, so curbside pickup, we're trying to make it very easy for people to find what they want. They can call us, they can place holds online. We walk people through what we have that's new, what we think they're going to be interested in. We're creating book bundles for people that don't really know what they want. This works especially well with families with small children that we can just put together a thematic bundle of books or just a random selection. And you can see our checkouts are have gone up from when we first started in May. We hit a 2,500 high for August. And the transfers are materials that that other libraries in Cochise County request from us. So the county sends a courier around to all the county libraries twice a week. And they pick up and deliver materials. And actually, in October, we hit an all-time high of 847 items that were requested from other libraries. So people are using our materials, we're getting them out to them, and that's that's really one of the most important things to us. Our e-library, our e-library has exploded in terms of content. Thanks to Amity Ricketts of the Cochise County Library District. Again, we're trying to teach patrons how to download eBooks and e-audiobooks. Patrons now have over 140,000 titles that they can choose from thanks to a reciprocal lending agreement with other libraries in the state. And RB Digital is magazine subscriptions that you can subscribe to, just as if you were a paid subscription, over 3,700 titles available, different languages, no limits, no returns. They're yours to keep forever. So really exciting news on the e-front.
So this is Allison. I don't know what's going on with this. Down. I want to start. Doing things differently is not always a bad thing. We have during this pandemic started approaching in March and doing them differently. We started with the Copper Queen Library and we, the seeds of combining digital and physical, we put by them, we packets of seeds cleaned up the library in that first in USPS. We used this model to create a pandemic planned summer reading program, which ended up being the only viable for our community. And we had online registration, the packets, a packet a week per child. Putting the cornerstone of the packet as our book a week per child that we implemented five years ago with funding from Freeport-Mack Moran, who the ability to buy these from and funding from the Friends of the Copper Queen Library, we were able to pay the postage. This program sent up to Arizona libraries and they loved our model much that they created a program that they offered to libraries across the state using our Scholastic Literacy Partnership by books and were able to do summer reading program with this model and funding from the state libraries. That was very the BSR added a 0 to 24 months age group. And we started off welcoming our 19 newborn in Bisbee into the library world with board books and interactive individual activity booklets that I created, we created for parents to work with their children, even as young as babies, reading to them is great. So we then went virtual with implementing our YouTube channel that we had created, but we have created story times videos. We've now worked on health and wellness videos with Yotaki and a couple of other people. We have belly dance, qigong, yoga, all available on our YouTube. It's local teachers and local content. We have created craft kits to go. We have, how many, Jason, have we put out?
About 900 brown bag craft kits picked up, so.
But those are for the younger kids, and we created our, we usually do craft workshops in October, November, and December. Those became adult craft kits. We've put out 100 for, so far, 50 each, and we will have another 50 for December. We have partnered with FNAF U of A to create videos, and the Science Lab, and some of our volunteers virtually. So that's been very exciting. That's the Copper Queen Library on our YouTube channel. And we have continued or restarted our Tuesday night programs, our adult programming on Tuesday nights via Zoom. So we had people register on our website to receive the Zoom links via email, and that has been really wonderful. We've definitely been teaching how to use Zoom as well, but, you know, it's an easy program, and we're really all learning a lot about connecting and reaching and communicating with each other this way virtually. So there's been a lot of successes with that. And Jason, what is our YouTube viewer?
It's about 2,500 views of our video, so.
Of the original content.
Very proud of that.
So far created. It's been very exciting, and we thank everybody who's been participating in this new adventure with us. It has been really a pleasure to work with so many in creating this form of access and programming. So we have been really lucky to have received individual funding. We don't have a programming budget in the city Bisbee budget, but the Friends of the Library and especially Arizona Libraries offers many support grants and programs to libraries across the state. Arizona Libraries took their CARES Act money and divided it into smaller LSTA CARES Act grants. So we received three grants. The first one was for masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, Chromebooks, and a professional video camera, tripod, lenses, and a really nice mic for us to create virtual programs. We were able to purchase Wi-Fi extenders for both the main library and the annex to send that signal out with a stronger boost farther from the building, which has been very good for the community. And we also received an LSTA grant. Jason, do you want to talk about that, the teen books and DVDs?
Yeah. For the San Jose Annex, we received a grant to expand our children and teen collection over there. And so we got $4,000 to buy brand-new books and really build that collection out, and we'll talk about that in another slide.
And as you're aware, we received the Shippeau Building Assessment Grant. We are extremely grateful to Shippeau for choosing us. This is a much-needed grant and will allow us to move forward with assessing and protecting our beautiful building. We also received grant funds from the Firewise Gardening Grant, which we, there's a new garden created at the Annex. The Friends of the Library have been incredible, supporting all of these new ways of reaching people and doing programs. We call them the best friends of DQL, and Freeport MacMoran has remained steadfast in their support, supporting the summer reading program and the Annex expansion.
So a lot of exciting projects going on at both the main library and the Annex, and this is just kind of an overview of what we've been able to accomplish during our closure, and we're still working on different projects. One of the things, we've got a brand-new sign designed and built by artist Ben Dale that Public Works will be hanging soon. We worked on some window art, new lighting in the reading room sponsored by the Friends. We had our bathrooms re-tiled and did an art project with some old photographs of Bisbee that were printed out on vinyl wallpaper. The electrical outlets on the balcony that I mentioned, and thank you to Public Works, they fixed our roof very early on during the pandemic, which meant that we could fix all the ceilings that were damaged with water. So kudos to them. They did a fantastic job, and our, our library is looking very, very beautiful, and we look forward to the day where people can come in and see everything.
We really do. We miss you all, but we are very excited to be able to continue to create this space for the people of Bisbee.
And over at the Annex, it's the Little Library That Could. We've expanded, thanks to the BUSD. We were given another room across the hall that we've created an adult library, which meant that we could expand the other room into, to include a teen lounge, and that's where the, the grant for the teen books came in. It's looking really fabulous. We, we really worked hard on creating spaces that were welcoming and comfortable. The Firewise Garden that Allison mentioned, that was through Old Bisbee Firewise, and they received a USDA grant to do that. So we've got a garden out front. The mural project on the side of the administration building over on Melody Lane, funded by the Bisbee Arts Commission and the Friends of the Library. The design was through a public program led by Allison, and the painting was actually done by artist Steve Miller. We've got our tool library over at the Annex. We're really excited to unveil that. That was sponsored by the Friends of the Library and the Bisbee Bloomers. And the Annex has become our, our little film studio, and that's where all of our filming is done for our virtual programs.
So we are very excited about this new project, which libraries across the country have been doing. They can be done smaller, they can be done large, and we are starting with temporary, smaller version of story walks. We want to include San Jose, Old Bisbee, and Warren all at the same time, and utilize our parks for outdoor activities and storytelling. So please look forward to seeing these signs that will be like political signs on those little metal posts. So they are temporary, but we hope that they stay up and that people take advantage. We will be making more announcements about this. Outdoors is the safest place to be, even though the weather is getting cold. Bisbee still has just beautiful weather for a nice little walk in our beautiful parks.
And we're doing, we're really concentrating on expanding and creating collections specific to youth health and wellness. And we've been able to do this with additional funds from the Friends of the Library. And we really, in the beginning, we took, concentrated on preschool and parenting books, very, you know, fun, interactive books on breathing, mindfulness, yoga, things to give kids the tools to grow up with, to help deal with situations like we're going through right now, understanding their emotions, and, and always acting with empathy and kindness. And we've also expanded that to our teen collection, just giving them some resources. You know, we, our kids are struggling just as much as we are, and to have the tools that they can use to, to help them through something, you know, that's, you know, anxiety relief and just feeling confident and empowered. So we really want to make sure that we don't leave anyone behind, and we're also adding adult books as well, but the, concentrating on the youth.
So this next project, we're just at the culmination of, we have decided to create mental health and wellness bags for all of the youth of Bisbee. So all of the students, we're creating 800 bags with the support of Arizona Complete Health, the Copper Queen Hospital, and the Friends of the Copper Queen Library. These bags will have a lot of swag, some ice packs and hand sanitizers and masks, but also some books and some mental health and wellness program books that Scholastic has created, seeing the need during this year. And as well as some bookmark with all the crisis hotline numbers, which we feel is really important to just have in your hands. But we also just wanted to give some things to our students to remind them about self-care, about reaching out to get support from other people and to let them know that we're here. So we will be delivering 700 bags to all preschool in the BUSD and keeping 100 for other students who are in other schooling, education systems, and homeschooling. And we just want to thank all our partners on this, and we'll be unveiling that, I believe, in just a day or two. That is not the last slide. That was the last slide, Jason.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's an overview of what we've to, if you have any questions, we can answer them. But, you know, we, we I'm very proud of what our staff has been able to accomplish during this time. We really, you know, each and every one of them has, has shined through this and, and brought out, you know, their best to help serve the community during this time. So I really am proud of all, all of us. And I, and also just thank the support of the city and city manager Teresa Coleman just for being supportive and, and really backing our projects.
And we wanted to let the new mayor and, and new council members know that we do have library cards for you, honorary library cards, and that we're also very grateful because Joelle, our personnel director, has made it easier for incoming new city staff to all register for a library card, and for anybody who doesn't have one yet or thinks it's expired, just give us a call. We'll get you a library card and get you access to all of these great resources. We just really want to thank you all for working so hard to support our community in this time, this pandemic. We all have to work together and support each other, and that means kindness and empathy and compassion and love. And those are the bedrock things that we are basing our programs on and how we support our community. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I just have a comment.
Sure.
I just want to thank you both. I mean, over the years, to see what the library has become, and I know I've told you this before, but it's really a social hub, and you've continued that even during the pandemic. And I really appreciate all the efforts and all the, all the things that you've done to get out to the, not only the kids, but even adults, so that they can get through this pandemic a little easier. Thank you very much for all your, your great work in this, and thank whoever else was involved with it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Really quickly, I was invited and have seen all the changes they made at the main library and also at the Annex. It was quite eye-opening, and, you know, as we work through this really reaching out unbelievably what what they can do. So we all appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I'm going to regress here just for a second. This whole thing is new to me. I didn't really open my chat window, but I did want to go back just a minute because I did get a message from Chief, your daughter interjected here that she wanted to say how proud she, that, that your kids and grandkids are of you in your 30 years. So sorry, it was on my off-screen, and I'm getting there. I'll learn it, but just wanted to make that a point of it. Families watching, and they know, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. All right. All right, moving on. Agenda item number seven. This is discussion and possible approval of a public auction for the transfer of certain property and the establishment of a minimum price. This will be from Mr. Ward.
You have it. Mayor and Council, on which of our, which of the, which of the proposed sales are we, are we going over first?
This one will be, well, you want to, 10360, 249.
Okay.
Star at 125 star.
Yeah. Okay, I know you guys have looked over the council action form and the staff report. There's this, there's the property that Kirk Iris is wishing to purchase from the city. And while I approve, well, it's a good idea to sell the property, and that's, that's been something that I support. But I also, I also see that the piece that's left over alongside of it, which is going to be another 30 foot by 100 feet parcel, that's, that's going to be left kind of orphaned there. I'd like them to go together, and so what I'd asked was for you guys to potentially table this until February, and that way, we could go, it could go before planning and zoning. And it's, it's kind of steep, and it's, it's not a lot of valuable there, valuable lot. But we can, if we put those together, someday it's going to be built upon and will be an asset for our town. And parking is a good use for it today. Mr. Iris, you want to use it for parking, but, but I, I would love to see somebody build on it someday. And that was my thought behind that. The price, we were, we were going to ask $2 a square foot for the portion that he was asking for at this point. And it passed through the Planning and zoning commission unanimously to recommend as mayor and council. And that's where we're at with it. You have any questions?
So when you say table this, you want to include another piece in with this same sale, or what? I'm a little lost.
Yes, I would. I'd like to include, there's, there's the two lots that are side by side.
Right.
That, there's two, two, you know, the original lots, which were 30 by 100. Mr. Iris was wanting just the one. And the other one is, would, like I said, it's kind of orphaned. It's between two private properties, and, and I would like to include them together and sell that second one for substantially less, make it reasonable. But it's good for all of us to get that property in, you know, into public hands.
And Mr. Iris wants to buy that other piece also, then?
We haven't talked about it. I sent him an email on it.
Okay, so you don't really want to table this agenda item. You want this one to go ahead and, and look at the other one later? I guess I'm still trying to figure out what it is that you are.
I would say I want to table this one, so that, so that we can, we can put those two together and have an option that included both parcels instead of just one.
I wouldn't want to hold him up, but if, if he's okay with that, that's fine with me.
I'm sorry, Ken. I can't tell you. I can't tell you if he is or isn't because this, I sent this off today to him. So it's up to you guys. I don't have a problem if you pass it out, pass it through. That'll be just fine. I don't, I'm not difficult.
Comments from council? What do you all think? Any? This, Jacque? Ms. Jacomino?
Well, if he's saying to table it, I think it might be a good idea just to give him more time to, you know, get all of it together like he's talking about, you know? It would seem more logical to go ahead and table it tonight if, if that's what you're asking. So that, that is what you're asking kind of sort of, right?
Yes, Jim.
Yeah. So, I mean, I agree with, you know, with him. I don't see why not because that lets him get his ducks in a row a little bit better also with the other piece, you know?
Yeah, we don't want to create an island of sort, I guess, is what you're talking about. So, yeah. We can table this. He decides he wants to go ahead. You can bring it back. Let us know. We can get it back on. Sounds good to me. Any other comments, feelings on this from the members?
Just Mayor, I would agree that it's a good idea to table this so that those two things could be bundled together. So we don't wind up with a little island that is no good.
Great. Want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we table item number seven, transfer of certain city property, adjusting to 123 Star Avenue.
A second.
And we have a motion to table and a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? So moved. Item seven is tabled. So we'll move on to item eight. Mr. Ward, this is the one for James Terry. It's discussion and possible approval of a public auction for transfer of certain city property and the establishment of a minimum bid price.
Mr. Terry has already purchased some property that was associated with his, with his, he had a house there and he tore it down, which was not a bad idea either, I might add. But the, so he had already purchased some property from us, which left kind of a polygon shaped lot. So to make it square and it's, he's already actually done some improvements on the lot. Looks to me like the portion along the city putting the culverts that ran across. But he wants to bar, he wants to purchase that property and add it to his, which it's, it's not doing us any good. It'll, it'll do him good. It'll put on the tax roll. And I think it's, it's no, it's a very reasonable thing. There's, there's no reason why not to, to sell it. There's no anticipated city use.
All right. Any discussion? But do you have anything you'd like to comment on? I did drive up there. It was kind of hard to locate what the property was, but seemed like it was a, any kind of a, a problem. So seeing no comment, do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize a public auction for the transfer of the designated surplus city property and set a minimum bid price of $6,000 for this property.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve that we go to public auction on this property with a minimum bid price of $6,000. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? So moved. Item eight unanimously. So moving on, got to get down this line. Agenda item number nine, this will be discussion and possible approval of resolution R-20-27, declaring and adopting the results of the general election held on November 3rd, 2020, and ordering the recognition of this resolution.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the resolution that would accept and approve the results from the general election held on November 3rd. And if approved tonight, we will record it for the record.
Do we have anybody who wants, have a comment or have anything to say? This is of course for all of the changes for the public out there of, of our charter and the two tax sections. So all the charters passed except the one and the, one tax passed and the other one didn't. So that, I think everybody knows that by now, but just so that I know what we're voting on here. So anybody want to give me a motion?
I move to approve resolution R-20-27, declaring and adopting the results of the general election held on November 3rd, 2020, excuse me, and ordering the recordation of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and a second to approve agenda item number nine. We will need a vote on this. Ms. Cornon?
Council member Pollock?
Aye.
Council member Jacomino?
Aye.
Council member Davis?
Aye.
Council member Johns?
Aye.
Council member Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes, 7-0. So moved. And so now, back up to the top. We'll go to the city manager's report. I asked for a couple of these items to go on just so people know where we're going to be moving on the garbage and recycling and, and how we're doing on our changeover to the new, new city hall. So Ms. Coleman?
Yes, and Mr. Haru will address the garbage and recycling.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. First off, I'd like to thank the residents of especially Old Bisbee for their patience during this difficult time. You know, we had to make some changes and some, they've been a little bit difficult. It's given us an opportunity to evaluate our operations in Old Bisbee. And with the approval of the council, we were able to purchase a new garbage truck and 295 gallon trash containers. We unfortunately, with COVID, the delivery of both of those were delayed by a couple of weeks. We expect to have our new garbage truck here in the next week or two. And then the following week, we should be receiving those garbage cans. The plan for our garbage is to place the garbage containers throughout Old Bisbee, not just on Tombstone Canyon and Brewery Avenue, but is throughout Old Bisbee at 80 different locations. Now, those locations are, are not a, they don't have to be a permanent thing. We will definitely, we'll place them there and we will evaluate if they are in a good location. I definitely invite the residents and the council and mayor to give input. If we need to relocate some of those into a more convenient location, that's something that we can do. In addition to that, we just received the material to make the holding containers or the holding racks for those. So we are looking, looking for February 1st. We should be, we should have all of those in place. If not sooner, I hope definitely sooner. But that is for now. As far as the recycling, again, thank you for your patience with that. We actually have been recognized by ADQ for our recycling program and how we've handled it through the, the coronavirus pandemic. They have actually decided to include us on a grants program through the USDA so that we can become, if approved, maybe a hub and spoke recycling program. Our program currently is where we have the hub, our main recycling center, where we ask right now everybody to come in and, and bring their recycling materials to the, the center. What we plan on doing is creating spokes. So we would then put smaller collection centers in Old Bisbee where you wouldn't have to come all the way into our main recycling center. You could deposit your recycling centers there and then we could then bring those to our main recycle. With the help of ADQ, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, if this is a success, may even be able to expand it more. So with that, we hope to have a, our spoke hub recycling center in Old Bisbee by March 1st, shortly after we get our, our garbage taken care of and get that set in place. Again, this is, these are new changes. I definitely invite people to residents, mayor, council, to, if there are any input you would like to give to us, we definitely are accepting of that and we evaluate as we put those in place.
Hey, thank you. I think that might help alleviate some of the, at least we have something to look forward to now in the near future. Thank you. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And so one thing that Jason and Allison did not share with you is that city hall finance and personnel staff, along with the clerk's office, have all moved into the library. We are completely without electricity at the old city hall facility. So, oh, I think public works too. We had a public works employee up at the library today also. So the server has been set up there and all the staff are working, processing utility bills. There will be no late fees or penalties on any of the bills due in November because we had a delay in behaving, being able to process them. So folks won't see any penalties if we had some difficulty getting their bill to us. So there's still time even to get that in if you haven't found a payment box. I ran into somebody out at the old city hall today when I went to pick up supplies and Ivan was able to work with them. And then the move to the building at 76 Erie Street. We are having carpet laid right now. Our parks crew, our streets crew and Jesus can shine in if I've left anybody out. Even Jesus and Matt have been up there working. We hope to have the carpet down, well, for the most part tomorrow. And then we have a crew lined up to do some moving furniture on Thursday. The priority will be to get the finance department in place first. And then the rest of us will kind of work around that to get in place. So I'm not saying we're going to all be moved by the end of the week, but we should all be moved by the end of the following week.
Just, so everybody knows that's in Lowell. That's where the new site will be and they'll find it, I'm sure, if they need to. And just to mention, I was there and I also saw you in your paint pants. So I know that you were there.
Yes, a little paint help. And Ashley and I are planning to be back there to work tomorrow. So.
Throw that in there. Any other, you have any other bits, current stuff? Anything else, Ms. Coleman?
No, that's it. Thanks.
All right. We have a comment from council member Jacomino. Are you there? There you are.
I'd like to take this, yeah, I'm right here. I'd like to take this time to welcome you to the council mayor. And I'm looking forward, as I'm sure everyone is, to working with you through collaboration and cooperation and your well-known, open-mindedness. As we move forward into the new budget, I am also looking forward to not only your experience, but your prior knowledge in budget building. So again, taking this moment to welcome you and I personally am looking forward to working with you.
So no pressure. Okay, I got that. So, but that's all. We can conclude this. However, Bill just signed off. He's our, so Frank, are you going to start taking over Bill's job? You've seen this. Motion to.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor of the journey, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you all for putting up for my first meeting and it's got to get better. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Have a great night.
Good night.
Bye, guys.
Good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.